Yeah.
We're working on getting my call.
I'm going by that one. Because I've got 6:59 on my iPad. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you'd please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Sean, will you please co-roll?
Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Thank you. All right. Tonight, we have no announcements, proclamations, or presentations. We have no appointments. Do we have any agenda modifications?
No, Your Honor.
All right. We have no public hearings, so we will move to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Yes, my name is Bob Zimmerman. I'm at 33029, 46th Place South. I've been raising a number of safety issues lately, and I appreciate the little bit of response that I have gotten from council members. Hopefully, this will all be resolved someday. But I do have some good news. I happened to discover by accident that NAFTA, National Fire Protection Act article, or Code 58, is in the city code. And I don't understand why the people that I was talking to at Valley Regional Fire Authority didn't know that. And when you search for that in the code publishing thing, no matter how I searched for it, under propane and the title of it and everything else, it doesn't show up under that search. So anyway, I left the message last week to find out, you know, since I found that, you know, what would be the status of enforcing it, and I didn't get a return call. So I made another call a little higher up the staff this morning, and hopefully, we will hear something here in the next few weeks. But beyond that, I noticed last week that the entire state was under extreme fire hazard. And, you know, and except for the Olympic Peninsula. And we had a brush fire burn up the West Hill. I've lived up there for almost 40 years. And they've only had two brush fires burn up that hill, burn up the hill in that period. One of them was down by the cemetery probably three, four years ago, and of course, the other one was just a week ago. And I got to thinking, you know, well, gee whiz, oh, where we live there on that ravine, we're just one flick of a cigarette butt out a window on Highway 18, and we've got a brush fire burning up to our house. And so we really don't have any code in the city to prevent that. And it looks like I'm going to run out of time. But anyway, a friend of mine who happens to be Canadian was on the team that did Fire Wise or Fire Safe in Canada. They went around and they looked at all the fires, every building that burned and brushed from forest fires. They researched this stuff. They interviewed people. They spent two years getting that fire SMART program going. And the National Fire Protection Association adopted those standards here in the United States. And I would certainly encourage that the city council adopt that. The state of Washington hasn't. But as we get hotter and drier, we're certainly going to have more and more of these fires. And this kind of goes into the homeless issue, too. Why don't we save what we already have? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final time. Anyone else like to speak? All right, we will move on. I don't believe we have any correspondence this evening. So we will move to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council if any. And for the finance committee, we will go to Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. The finance committee reviewed the claims vouchers as well as the payroll vouchers. There were 227 claims vouchers and two wire transfers from the report dated 8/20/2018. For a total of $6,144,000, all claims were reviewed and were reasonable and in good order. On the payroll side, from 8/20/2018 through 8/15/2018, those payroll vouchers were reviewed. There were 19 checks, 578 direct deposits, and eight associated electronic fund transfers for tax, retirement, et cetera, totaling $2,230,000. The finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. And for the roads ad hoc committee, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee did meet on August 7th with Director Galvin and with James Webb to review and finalize a review of the transportation improvement plan. So the tip review is completed. The committee met today with Director Galvin at 5:30 to kind of recap our last prior meetings and to kind of set a plan going forward here. So the committee will be making, is looking at making a presentation to the full council on October 29th at the study session. And prior to the presentation, we are going to meet with Director Coleman and probably at least one or twice, two more times with Director Galvin. Those meetings are planned for September 5th, September 17th. And as needed, we will look at meeting October 8th, October 15th. And lastly, if necessary, on October 22nd prior to making our committee report.
Thank you. And I believe there's been a request that Director Coleman be involved.
Yes.
Did you, yeah, okay, good. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Brown.
Second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you. We have about six items on the consent agenda tonight. We have the minutes of the May 23rd, August 29th, September 12th, October 10th, 2016, and August 13th, 2018, study sessions. The minutes for the August 6th, 2018, regular council meeting. The claims vouchers and the payroll vouchers that Councilmember Brown just went through. And we have two Public Works projects. Public Works Project Number CP 1707, which is a contract, City Council to award a contract, 18-08, to Titan Earthwork LLC on their low bid of 360, almost $365,000, which is A Street SE Corridor Signal Safety and Operations Improvements. And the last one is the Public Works Contract Number 18-22, two great floors for the senior center kitchen floor replacement in the amount of $133,467.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your microphone isn't on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Nope, still not on. There it is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Third time's a charm, Councilmember Pelosi.
On item F as in Frank, Number 18-22. I know that the senior center was awarded, what, $118,000 grant? And this is $133,000. Can we have an explanation as to... I thought that the $118,000 was going to be used on various projects. And now I see that it's going to be $133,000 just for the flooring. Can we have an explanation on that, please?
Shelley, do you, are you aware?
Well, they did receive a grant, but I thought the grant was through the Veterans Lobby, and that was for programs down at the senior center. And this particular item, I think this, well, this was going to go into the budget for next year, but they are doing it this year. I think they're using funds. I don't think they're using that grant.
It was previously funded project from general fund dollars.
I don't follow you. I'm sorry.
So this is not from the grant that was recently received?
Oh, this is not from the grant.
No, no. This was a project that had previously been planned.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. Relation to Public Works Project CP 1707, I've asked this many times before, but, you know, again, we noticed that we're significantly above the engineer's estimate. So a couple of questions. One is, is this a in-house estimate or a consultant estimate?
So this is a consultant estimate, and you are correct. So we're seeing higher than normal bidding amounts, and we're also seeing an increase in material pricing right now that's affecting bids. So that's just consistently across the board.
And as we're talking going forward, so are we making any kind of mid-course corrections on projects coming up before adjusting the estimates?
We are working on that, and we do do that. Unfortunately, it's hard to keep track of the changes that are happening in the current market just because of the amount of work going on as well as the increase in material costs that's happening.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And that's not just the city of Auburn. That's just about every agency. Yeah. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business, so we will move on to ordinances and resolutions. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 6689, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, relating to criminal offenses, amending Chapter 9.14, 9.22, and 9.62 of the Auburn City Code.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
I move to adopt Ordinance 6689.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Municipalities can charge people with misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. It is the purview of the Superior Court or county to charge felonies. In the lower class of felonies, Class C felonies, they frequently decline to prosecute as a Class C felony, even though the crime has been committed, and defer back to the municipal court, which means we have to charge them with attempting to commit a Class C felony. But sometimes, they have committed it. So by cleaning up the language of our ordinances, we can charge declined felonies as a gross misdemeanor, which clears up some of the confusion in charging. You're not charged as attempting a Class C felony. You're charged with the gross misdemeanor of having committed this crime.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to focus on the identity theft portion of this. Both my wife and I have been victims of identity theft multiple times. And we've had a situation where, in one particular instance, it took us over three years to recover from the damages that were done with that. It was both financially, it was credit-wise, constant attacks on accounts. In fact, one day, when I was still working at the Housing Authority, I had received an attack on my bank account called by the bank official out of the headquarters in Portland. Went to the bank before I went to work and closed that account. I got to work. I received another phone call from the same official who said, "Your account has been attacked." I said, "My account's been closed, and we issued, you know, a stop on that until we can get it cleared over the next 48 hours." He said, "No, the new account that they just opened for you was also attacked." And in that sense, we had to go, I had to go back down to the bank, and they actually created some drafts for me to hold for 48 hours to reestablish the account again and go through the process again. When I see, in my personal opinion, a lessening of the crime of identity theft from a felony or gross misdemeanor, to me, that's unacceptable. Many, many people go through the pain of identity theft, and it is painful. And I understand that we have a 364 days in jail and a $5,000 fine for the gross misdemeanor. But in many cases, even for the Class C felony portion of it, the judge will slap the wrist of the perpetrator and say, "Okay, you get suspended sentence and pay your fines, and you got a felony, and go see DLC." I believe here, the emphasis is, what we should do is put the emphasis on the county prosecutor to do their job. Declining felonies because they either overworked, don't have the staff, or for whatever reason, is, to me, not a reason to not prosecute. In my opinion, a Class C felony is a Class C felony. It should not be a gross misdemeanor. And I believe our emphasis needs to be placed in that area, and we need to place a strong encouragement to the county prosecutor to do their job and to do it right. In that sense, and I will not be supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, did you want to respond in any way to that?
No, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those and, Councilmember Wells.
Is there any way that we can pull the identity theft out of this and just look at the rest of it and then have some further debate later on on the identity theft portion?
Yes, we could, you could, you could strip that exhibit out of the ordinance. My suggestion, though, would be it is better to have it in than to have to add it back in later on. I understand Councilmember DeCoursey's position, but we have no authority to tell the prosecutor what to charge and what not to charge. So if you strip it out of this ordinance, then we can't charge anything except an attempt again, and we're back doing the same thing we are, which creates more work for my prosecutors.
Councilmember Wells.
I'm fortunate. No one wants my identity. But when someone does that, the ramifications to the innocent person can be for years and years and years. And so I'd like to discuss this more. So I won't be voting for this because of the identity portion of it.
Okay, so just as a reminder, this is just so that in the case that King County chooses not to charge, we have more teeth in our law here in the city to be able to charge. Instead of an attempted felony, it would now be a gross misdemeanor, which should be better in everyone's opinion than an attempted felony.
It will make it easier for my prosecutors to present that case to a judge or jury if you pass it.
So while, while understanding the concerns, and I, probably most of us up here have been the victims of identity theft, we can certainly work with King County to promote or encourage them to try more cases, to charge more cases. But in absence of that, we can only do as much as the law will allow. And this ordinance is trying to allow the city to be able to charge at the maximum that we're allowed to charge. Councilmember Trump Manuel.
You know, when I first saw this, and I also let my husband read it. We have just gotten, you know, hit also with my purse being stolen and everything. And our computer got hacked into. I've been still getting phone calls from businesses where people have been trying to charge things. And I know that I can't talk very much about it because my case is still under investigation. But I also had my, you know, mixed feelings on this being lowered down. And so I have to agree with Mr. DeCoursey. This is something that a lot of people, we're going to hear a lot about.
Let me clarify. This doesn't lower anything down. What happens right now is the county declines to prosecute a Class C felony for identity theft. Comes back to my prosecutors. They don't want to let that person off. They charge it as an attempt. We're still charging it. It's still a gross misdemeanor. We still have the same elements of proof. In fact, it's a little harder because we have to prove, we have to go in with a legal fiction of they attempted to do something that they've already done. They took your credit cards. They've already broken into your computer. So it's just a legal fiction that makes it, we have to take a couple of extra steps to get through and prove it. If you approve this slate of ordinances, it's a direct charge. We can just say, "We're charging you with forgery under our code. We're charging you with identity theft under our code." We don't have to try to go around for the attempt. So if your concern is that adopting this ordinance lets the county off the hook, it has no effect on that. It will not achieve that goal if that is your goal. It's not going to have any effect on the county's charging decision. It's a separate conversation to go back to them and say, "We encourage you to take these more seriously" and to put the manpower, staff power into it.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
And Attorney Gross, I really appreciate that, and I, you know, I'm sensitized to what happens on the prosecution's side internally here. And I fully understand that we do not have, staff does not have, the authority to go back and direct the county prosecutor. But I believe strongly it is our position as elected officials to work with other elected officials and to work with the county executive to make sure the prosecutor is charging when charges should be made under felonies. I don't agree, and I do agree that some charge is better than none. But I do not agree that we declassify issues that affect this strongly. And I believe that if we need to pull this out temporarily and have more discussion, I would support that. But if it stays in this ordinance, I will not support the ordinance.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. I certainly understand the concern of Councilmember DeCoursey. And I have an additional concern that the district, excuse me, the prosecuting attorney's office is not planning to charge on minor felony-type charges. And then we're going to be expected to take up that slack. It seems to me like that's going to have a fiscal impact on our city. But getting back to the issue we've been discussing, the prosecuting attorney's office is an elected office. That office is up for election this year. And it may be the right time to have a conversation with the incumbent and perhaps the challenger about this issue. And I don't know if we can do that as a council member, as a council, but maybe that's something, if we can, that we would consider doing, particularly around this issue of identity theft.
So there can always be a resolution of the city council that would support King County trying those cases, correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So that is always a possibility, that a resolution that would include all seven members of the city council to encourage the prosecutor's office, the King County prosecutor's office, to try more of those cases? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Well, you know, after reading the background summary on this proposed ordinance, you know, I'm kind of at odds with the language in here. It basically does look like that we're reducing an A to a B, and a B to a C, and a C to a gross misdemeanor. So it looks to me like they, or it sounds to me like they are actually reducing the prosecutor's ability to actually go after an individual who's been committing or has attempted to commit these crimes. And it just seems to me that we are lessening the effect that we're having on these things by treating them less than what they really are. So I tend to agree.
Mr. City Attorney, would you care to respond to that?
I understand where you got that, where you're getting that impression, but the current status of the law is what does that. Right now, the felonies are either A, B, or C felonies. The crime of attempted felony automatically by operation of law lowers those down. So in the situation where identity theft right now is a felony, and so if the county doesn't charge it again, the only way the city prosecutors have any jurisdiction to do anything with it is to charge it as an attempt. And again, that just causes some procedural problems. But the statutory framework of lowering everything one step for an attempt, that's in the RCW right now. So what this ordinance is proposed to do is to give our prosecutors an additional tool to make the prosecution go more quickly. They're not going to, depending on the facts of the case, they'll still be charging it. They'll just have to charge it as an attempt, the way they're currently doing it. It just makes their life a little more difficult.
Councilmember Wells.
Now, I didn't, I didn't bring my Jurassic Park manual of how to do this. But I'd like to amend the motion to include everything as printed, with the exception of the identity theft portion.
If I may rephrase that, the motion would be to amend Section 3 of the ordinance by striking subsection 3B.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
I will second that.
All right. Is there any more discussion? All right, we will first vote on the amendment to the emotion, or to the motion. All those in favor of the amendment to strike section, sorry, which section was it?
3B, Your Honor.
Okay. 3B. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. All right, we will now move to the ordinance as amended. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 6689, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution 5381, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to accept, if awarded, grant funds in the amount of $500,000 from the Federal Aviation Administration and to execute the administration's grant agreement.
All right, do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I would like to... They're sticky buttons today. Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move Resolution 5381.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 5381 authorizes the city to accept Federal Aviation Administration grant funds, if awarded, for Project MS 1811 Auburn Municipal Airport Runway Extensions Property Acquisition Phase. The Auburn Municipal Airport Runway Enhancements Project will improve aircraft safety and the ability to accommodate the current and forecast fleet of multi-engine piston aircraft for both takeoff and accelerated stop distances by providing additional pavement on both ends of the runway. Grant funding from the FAA is available to support the property acquisition phase of this project. However, before the FAA is able to award these funds, a resolution must be approved by the city, including a specific statement of support. That's why I support this resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5381, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move to Mayor- All right, we will move to mayor and councilmember reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Baggot.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, this was, since the last council meeting, has been a very busy time for lots of regional meetings. So I'll try to whiz through these as best I can. On Friday, August seventeenth, I had the honor and privilege of assisting the emergency management team, V R F A, and the A P D to graduate the most recent CERT class number forty-nine here in the council chambers. The graduation ceremony was well-attended by several family members and large, a large contingent of graduating members as well. And after everyone received their graduation certificates and did the photo opportunities, were treated to a special group of special cupcakes and Gosanko chocolates. Yum. Also, for our Auburn residents in Pierce County, on Wednesday, August fifteenth, I attended the Tacoma-Pierce County Board of Health Study Session where we discussed the two thousand nineteen fee schedules that will again be the subject of the October study session when the new fees will be proposed. Underground storage tank monitoring and effects on groundwater, and lastly firearm injury prevention, including firearm-related deaths, suicides, age-specific data, and funding for fire alarm, firearm research were reviewed. And again, for our Pierce County residents, on August second, I attended the Pierce County Cities and Towns Association Meeting where we heard from the Pierce County auditor regarding the upcoming twenty-twenty redistricting, the census, and the Voters Rights Act. And yes, the census is coming again every ten years. It's been about eight and a half years since the last one. And King County will be involved as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Decorsi.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, last Saturday evening, Deputy Mayor Baggot and myself had the opportunity to be at the Auburn Golf Course to play in the inaugural event of Glow Golf. If you've never hit a golf ball at dark, when you can't see, you might want to try this one next year. As we got our flashlights out and as we got our glow balls handed to us and got them lit up and we got to where our tee was, we started to strike the ball and hit the ball and throughout the night you heard "Four!" And you saw these glowing meteorites flying through the sky, landing on the ground, including one on the, was it the sixth or the ninth hole?
Ninth hole.
Which we were finishing up that night. And the two gentlemen were playing, one had their cart on one side of the fairway, we were on the other side. And all of a sudden, we saw those green thing come through the sky and land between the two carts. I told Bob, I said, "That was a heck of a drive." And well-aimed as well, because it didn't hit us. But it was a different event, a fun event, and something I think the golf course deserves a lot of accolades for, for putting this event together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to report, as being in my first year on council, I've done a lot of things so far for the first time. And on August seventh, I participated in the National Night Out Event. And I could not be more impressed with some of the citizens that live in our city that help us keep our city a livable place by working with their neighbors, helping to keep their eye on the neighborhood, and just generally being good folks. And their participation in this National Night Out, I ate some good cookies and some good hot dogs and everybody was very friendly. And our city employees did a great job of organize, helping to organize all this, and of course, the police officers that participated. Again, another thing for the first time is the budget process that we've been going through. And I think we've had three budget meetings so far, three budget workshops. And I'm impressed with not only the hard work that our department directors, finance department, and others have put into it, but the hard work of our city council members that read these very thick, dense books. And I've been putting myself to sleep at night reading them. But, no, it's just a well-done process and I'm learning a lot and I just appreciate everybody that helps make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
No report, Your Honor.
All right, Councilmember Wells.
Thank you. What I would like to propose to the group is that we work to have the identity theft provision or section put on one of our study sessions so that we can continue to not only educate ourselves, but also come up with a, with a game plan that kind of meets all of our needs. And I'm not sure who does law and order or identity thefts, which section that would be, which council member.
Finance.
Is that finance?
Finance.
So hopefully, finance, you could, I'm recommending, I'm not sure if there's consensus, but I think that there's still questions to be answered and decisions to be made and would like to not see it lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Yes, I just have one special meeting that I had back in August first. I had two young men email me. They were Boy Scouts from Covington's troop, and they wanted to meet with me to find out about what the city is doing on homelessness and also emergency preparedness. So I thought that it would be best to have these young men come in, sit down, and talk to our directors and ask them all the details that we have going on in the city. And we did. We met on August seventh with Cameron and Ian from troop five-seventy, that's their Boy Scouts troop, and they were trying to earn their citizens badge. And the questions that they asked were, "What are we doing on homelessness?" So we had Director Dana Hinman come in and also Joy. They came in and they answered a lot of questions that these young men had to ask about what we're doing and how and where they could help out. And then also, we had Jerry Thorson from the emergency, the director from emergency department management. And they asked him about the seniors, what are we doing with the seniors that don't have computers, don't have cell phones, don't have any means of getting information about if there's an earthquake or if there's a closure in the streets, a gas leak or something like that. So Jerry and one of his staffs came in and they shared a lot of information, gave the young man a lot of materials and stuff, and they walked out and they're really excited. In fact, we even encouraged them to bring their whole troop and take the CERT training. And so they're going to get that put together with Director Jerry Thorson. They left, they wanted pictures taken with the staff. I brought them upstairs, they wanted to meet the mayor, but she was busy at a meeting. So I went ahead and I showed them the, our whole department here and upstairs and they were just in awe. So they're really looking forward to getting involved in our city, and that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi.
So I attended a Water Resource Inventory Area Number Nine Watershed Ecosystem Forum, and we had a very dynamic presentation by Howard Hansen Dam, which is on our watershed on the Green River that protects us. And one of the, one of the things that came out of this presentation was the Seattle District Colonel, who overlooks the, his main response, one of his main responsibilities is overlooking the Howard Hansen Dam, making sure that it functions and operates the way it should. For the last couple of years, we have not had good communication with the district. So this was a good time for the elected officials to discuss with the Howard Hansen Dam officials to highly recommend that the new Colonel visits the Ryan Nine Forum so that we can meet him and discuss with him the problems that we are having with the salmon habitat from the Howard Hansen Dam down into Puget Sound. So it looks like we're going to make some headway on that because the more that the Seattle District understands our problems on the Green River, the better off we all will be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so a couple of the events have already been talked about, National Night Out. I would also like to say thank you to all of the council members and all of our team members for the city that went out and met. I think we had at least sixty, if not more, neighborhoods that were visited this year. And it's always really a nice opportunity for, for you to get out and meet our neighbors and for our neighbors to get to meet those who are working for them every day. So really appreciate everyone's involvement in that. And we also had visitors from our sister city in Japan, Tomba. And we share a sister city with Kent because about ten years ago, we had separate sister cities, but they were very near each other. And Japan government determined that they were going to merge small cities together into larger cities. And so our two sister cities were merged into Tomba. And so it's a unique opportunity for Kent, Auburn, and Tomba to, to share that relationship. And so Mayor Taniguchi and their deputy mayor, as well as some of their economic development officers from their local government, were in town and we had a couple of opportunities to be with them at a banquet, a welcoming banquet, and then also on that Friday night on August tenth, Mayor Ralph from Kent hosted a barbecue at her home for all of the delegates. And a big thank you to Mayor Ralph for opening up her home for that. And we had this past week, on Thursday, the sixteenth, we had our last community picnic for the summer. And I would like to say a big thank you to Erica Kleiss from Human Services, who has done a stellar job in coordinating six community picnics, two in June, two in July, and two in August, to be able to get out again to, to meet with our residents. Councilmember Pelosi, was it several of them, hocking tickets for a raffle and did a great job of, of getting everybody involved in that. And that same night, just prior to, to the picnic, we had the last summer cruise-in at the former Big Daddy site. And those are occurring in June, July, and August on the third Thursday of each month. And it's been growing over time. This time, there were about seventy cars that were in attendance. And so we're looking forward to how we can make it bigger and better next year and bring back what used to be the cruise-ins at Big Daddy's. On Saturday, the eighteenth, was the Chamber of Commerce hosting the Slick Watts Classic, which was a three-on-three basketball tournament. It was held over at the Outlet Collection. Of course, Slick Watts was, was in attendance to sign autographs and pose for photos, and I'm sure he took a few shots throughout the day. But we are excited about the Chamber doing this and hope that it just continues to grow. Hoop Fest over in Spokane each year draws about a thousand teams, if not more. I believe there were about two hundred this year for, for the Slick Watts Classic. So we have a little ways to go to grow, but I have no doubt that the Chamber will be able to accomplish that. And then just one more item, tomorrow afternoon at two forty-five, there will be a service for former councilmember Gene Serino at Tohoma National Cemetery. It will be a very quick service because at Tohoma, they typically run those very quickly. Unfortunately, there are many service members who hold their, whose families hold their, their memorials out there. And so two forty-five tomorrow at Tohoma National Cemetery. And that is all of my report. Mr. City Attorney, do we have need for a closed or an executive session tonight?
We don't, Your Honor, but if I could get clarification on Councilmember Wells's request to have something placed on the study session calendar related to identity theft. I didn't see four heads nodding. Is that the will of the council? One, two, three, four, five? Thank you.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.